Before we move into our meeting agenda tonight, we have two citizens here for citizens' comments. Cameron Nash. Maybe we only have one citizen here. We'll move on. Don Doris? Hi, Don, if you'll come up and if you'll just state your name and your address and then you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
My name is Don Doris. I live on eighty-twelve Moay Court, Smyrna. I'm the president of the Vineyards Homeowners Association and I'm here speaking on behalf of the association. What I want to address, I know time is short, so I'm going to run through this pretty fast. We've had some flooding in the vineyards. Now, we built in there in 2002. And so, we've had some flooding. What I'm going to mainly focus on is Moay Court. If I can talk about Moay Court, then the rest of it will fall into place. So, if you look on the FEMA map, and it's on the print out there. If you look on the FEMA map of the vineyards area, Moay Court is in a five-hundred-year floodplain. Now, what that means is, the way I understand it, is one flood every five-hundred years. What we've had is we've had four floods since 2011. So, four floods since 2011, something's wrong. Either it's not a five-hundred-year floodplain, or the drainage system is incorrect. So, we need to recall a system, and that's what I want to focus on. A system is on the front page. All the water entering into the system must equal all the water exiting the system. If the calculations of one source into the system is incorrect, then the calculations of the water exiting the system must also be incorrect. What I want to show you is one source here on Moay Court. And I think I can prove to you that I don't think that one's right. So, on Moay Court, there's a, behind Moay Court, there is a detention pond that's in Laverne. And that detention pond holds the floodwater until a certain point, then it dumps into the Smyrna system. Well, what happens during these floods is that floodwater in that detention pond rises and goes over the spillway. Well, when it goes over the spillway, it floods eighty-eleven Moay Court and then the two neighbors. So, if we look at this one system, what we can see is, if you look at the storm drain in that detention pond, it has a weir. And a weir is as the water rises, more water leaves. Then it has on the top, a, what's it called? A breeze? I believe it's a crest. The top part is a crest. So, as the water rises, more volume goes into it. Then when it reaches the crest, maximum water leaves to prevent it going over the spillway. This drain inside the draining ditch has a restrictor plate. Now, that's key.
Three minutes, Mayor. Mr. Doris, I really think it would benefit us to get our town manager and Tom Rose together to sit down with you to go over all of this and see what solutions that we can come up with for the problems that we're having in the vineyards. And it sounds like we may even have to get Laverne in on the meeting as well. And between all three of us, we may be able to come up with some sort of solution.
Well, that's why I'm here, because I've already addressed Smyrna and I've already addressed Laverne. And we haven't seen anything done.
And one of the things I've found is if we get everybody sitting around the table and get all of the issues out, then we can come up with a solution. And I think if Mr. Gill will facilitate that meeting.
No, I've not met with you. You and I and Tom sit down and we'll see if there is a solution. And part of it may fall on Laverne to participate in it.
I think the majority does fall on Laverne. And so, but I think, I mean, I'm not a citizen of Laverne. I'm a citizen of Smyrna, so.
But I think it's going to take more than three minutes for me to get a full grasp of what's going on. But I'd love to meet with you and, you know, I hate that this is happening to you. If there's something that we can do to help, I promise you we will try.
Well, that's what we're asking for.
Okay, sure.
And I think the council wants to see that happen as well. And so, and I will tell you, we have a good working relationship with Laverne. And I think when you all get around the table that we can try to come up with some solution.
Okay.
Okay?
So, if you'll just give me a call at City Hall, we'll set up something.
Thank you, Mr. Doris. We will now move into our meeting agenda, and I'll call this meeting to order. And tonight, prayer is going to be changed up a little bit. Mr. Atkins is going to do our prayer for us. And our pledge is going to be done by Alan Harrell with Boy Scout Troop 422. So, if you will stand with me for the prayer and the pledge, please.
Father, we come to you once again, and we just, we thank you for this wonderful town of Smyrna that we get to call our home. Lord, we're so blessed to have the people that serve this town in a capacity of protecting us and keeping our roads safe and our utilities provided, our homes warm in the winter and cool in the summer. Father, we just, we're thankful for the people that go out there and do the job every day here in our town to keep our citizens comfortable and safe. Lord, we also ask that you give direction to us as a council, Father, as we deliberate the business of the town, that we make wise decisions that affect our citizens in a positive way. Go with us now as we go through our meeting. Be with us as we continue each day. Thank you for this beautiful weather that we're enjoying now. It's these things we pray in your name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Alan. Roll call, Ms. Diane.
Councilman Cole.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Morell.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Dorr. Councilwoman Peebles.
Here.
Councilman Sullivan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Here.
Mayor Reed.
Here.
Okay, we'll move on to item three, which is approval or corrections of the minutes of the January ninth, 2018, and January twenty-fifth, 2018 meetings. Jeff, are these in order? Okay. Any additions or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
A motion. Do I have a second? Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes pass. Moving on to item four, correspondence and communications. Anything, Mr. Gill? We'll move on to item five, which is awards and recognitions. Tonight, we have a proclamation for Alan Harrell from Boy Scout Troop 422. Ms. Diane, would you read that for us?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas the conferring of the designation of Eagle Scout is one of the highest awards that can be bestowed upon a Boy Scout, as it requires years of dedication and commitment to achieve, since Eagle Scouts act as leaders and role models in the community. And whereas Alan Harrell began scouting as a Tiger Cub in first grade and has been active in Boy Scout Troop 422 for the past eight years. And whereas Mr. Harrell completed exemplary volunteerism to complete his Eagle Scout project, in which he worked diligently to clear years of overgrowth at Cannon Cemetery in Smyrna, Tennessee. He also documented and mapped all of the marked and unmarked grave sites, some dating back to 1796. This information was then turned over to the local historical society. Whereas Alan Harrell, even after earning the highest ranking, continues to strive and excel, graduating in the top ten percent of his class. And whereas the town of Smyrna is proud of Alan Harrell, as he exemplifies the values that make the community strong. Now, therefore, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Smyrna, Tennessee, join with Alan Harrell's family, friends, and all the citizens of Smyrna to congratulate him on reaching the goal of becoming an Eagle Scout, proclaim this thirteenth day of February, 2018.
The proclamation's here for you. So, here's my, Mr. Van and Chief Gill. I would also like to present you with one of the first keys to the city. There you go. I'm not sure what it'll open, but I do want to tell you how much we appreciate all that you've done. And we'd like you to talk a little bit about your project. Would you mind going forward? Great, there you go. Thank you.
So, my Eagle Scout project, I was in the car and, you know, you got, when you turn eighteen, that's it. You're done with, like, scouting.
You're done with a lot of stuff.
And, you know, I didn't know what project to do, right? And so, I asked my father, I said, "Hey, what was your Eagle Scout project?" And he said he did some trails up there in Long Hunter. I said, "What about my uncle?" Well, he did Cannon Cemetery twenty years before I did. And so, I was like, "Why not?" And so, literally, this project took me one year to complete overall. Master Sergeant Bigum up there at the Smyrna National Guard helped me out and kind of get this kind of lined up and stuff. I had about sixty people altogether come in there and we cleared out all the vegetation, recorded all of the graves. Then nobody had any idea who was buried where. And so, I went in there and did that. And then I also put crosses for the unmarked graves to keep that marked. Took two weekends and some rainy weather the first weekend. We kind of had to reschedule that. But, you know, long story short, I'm glad what scouting has done to me and, like, shown me through the process. And that's about it.
Well, we just want to tell you how much we appreciate all that you've done for our community. And we hope that you'll continue to stay involved in the town of Smyrna. There's so many opportunities for ways for you to get involved now that you're not actually in scouts anymore. Is that correct?
I go there and help out, kind of give my guidance, you know, and kind of give back to what it's given me through my eighteen years.
Great. Well, I know it's taken a lot of work to receive this honor. And we just want to tell you how proud we are and thank you for all that you've done.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. We will now move on to our consent agenda. And just so the citizens know, the consent agenda are items that are determined by the town manager to be routine matters and not necessarily needing discussion. I always like to read the items on the consent agenda so you know exactly what we're voting on. And council, if there's an item that you'd like to pull off and discuss individually, we can do that. So, our first item is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement amendment with Dempsey-Dilling and Associates relative to CEI services for the Florence Road project. Item B is approval and authorization for the mayor to execute change order number sixteen relative to the Florence Road widening project. Item C is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Gresham Smith and Partners relative to the engineering design services for improvements to Rotary Soccer Park and downtown Smyrna based on the hydrologic and hydraulic study. Item D is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with the Ingram Group relative to high-level general consulting counsel as well as government relations service. Item E is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with All Coast Aircraft Recovery Incorporated relative to the assembly and mounting of the FA-18 Hornet to the Captain Jeff Kuss Memorial Site. Item F is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with E. Allen Brandon relative to the marketing, public relations, and design services for the Captain Jeff Kuss USMC Memorial. And the last item is item G, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Gresham Smith and Partners relative to the NEPA and engineering design services for phases three, four, and five of the intelligent transportation system. Is there an item that council would like to pull off and discuss individually?
Number C, six C.
Okay, we will pull off item C and discuss that one individually. Anything else? Then, items A through G leading off C, do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve those items, removing item C.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes other than item C. So, let's discuss item C, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Gresham Smith and Partners relative to the engineering design services for improvements to Rotary Soccer Park in downtown Smyrna based on the hydrologic and hydraulic study.
I have a couple of questions on H. It says construction phase services. And it says, "Once the final plans have been completed and it's known what time of year the construction services will be needed, a detailed estimate for construction phase services will be prepared." Will that also be prepared by them, by Gresham?
Tom, do you want to come up and address the questions? Raquel Scott.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Yes, there was a question about the, Ken Hardy here, there was a question about the cost proposal.
The construction phase preparation of that. Will Gresham also be preparing the final plans for construction?
Yes, it'll be prepared. This will be a contract for them to do the final construction plans, prepare all the construction plans for it, and then put a cost estimate together.
Okay, so the cost estimate will come then when they do the construction plans for that portion?
Yeah, once everything's completed and we're at, like, probably ninety to hundred percent construction plans, they'll finalize the cost proposal or cost estimate for the project.
And then the construction, is this something that we'll send out for bid?
Yes, yeah, for the construction side, yes.
Okay. Those were the questions I had.
Okay, good. Okay. Any other questions about this item? Then do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to our old business, and we have one, two, three, four, five, just five public hearings tonight. Our first is a consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on tax map seventy-six, parcel ten point zero zero. Kevin?
This is the plan of services for the annexation. It is the next item on your agenda. This is for the parcel, map seventy-six, parcel ten. It's on Amville Road. The town would be providing all services here except for water. This does lie within CUD service boundary for water. This, the plan of services is a little bit different in the instance that it's really dependent on sewer being extended by the property owner to the north, which is the Lynnwood Development. And so, it's really depending on that sewer. So, we would not be providing sewer unless that adjoining project happens on this. So, but the county planning commission did recommend approval unanimously on this plan of services.
Questions for Kevin on this? Okay, then we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close this public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
A move we approve.
A motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation of property located on tax map seventy-six, parcel ten point zero zero, containing approximately nineteen point one acres. It's requested by S. Collins Property LLC. The zoning would be R-three. The property is located west of Amville Road and adjacent to parcels previously annexed and zoned, PRD. Lynnwood, this is a second reading.
This is the annexation request for the plan of services that you did just adopt.
This is, Land use plan would support a mix of office, retail, multifamily here. The request is for zoning to be R-three commensurate with annexation. Surrounding zoning is the PRD that is the Lynnwood PRD in town and RM in Rutherford County. Again, this would be provided water by CUD, but all other services by the town. And the planning commission did recommend approval of this unanimously.
Questions for Kevin on this? Mark or Tim, anything to add?
No, I know one of the things we discussed is, obviously, this is all subject to the PRD and Lynnwood providing the sewer to the property, right? So, that has to happen. One of the things, Kevin, I looked at with this. I don't recall with the Lynnwood Development what that bordering section was. Was that, is that, just off your memory, was that the townhome property or the, do you recall?
I think it was single-family. I think the townhomes were kind of more a little bit north and then also some to the west as well, but I don't remember exactly.
We did require them to do some buffering, though, along through there, as I recall, so that's all.
They could actually come in and ask for a septic tank, correct?
Certainly, they could. If they wanted to do some, for that matter, if they wanted to. They could.
Is there enough dirt out there to do anything like that, though?
I doubt it.
That's probably the question right there. It's pretty rocky.
I know Lynnwood didn't. That's why they wanted sewer from us, so.
Anything else? Okay, then we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close this public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
Move to approve.
A motion. Do we have a second? Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item C is more of a housekeeping item, which is a consideration of a resolution and memorandum of ordinance eighteen dash zero one relative to the annexation and R-three zoning of property located on tax map seventy-six, parcels ten point zero zero. Kevin, anything to add to that?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay. All in, I guess I need to get a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map fifty, parcel twelve point zero two, containing approximately nine point one acres. It's requested by Duane Beard from R-one and PRD to C-two. The property's located on Lee Victory Parkway. The recommendation also includes the rezoning of property located on tax map fifty, parcel thirteen point zero six, containing approximately point two four acre. It's owned by Parkway Baptist Church to go from R-one to C-two as well. And this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is on Lee Victory Parkway. It's about a thousand feet north of the intersection with Amville Road. The land use plan would support a lot of industrial and commercial development in this area, so this request is consistent with your land use plan. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C-two and the Adley Park PRD in town and then RM in Rutherford County. There is a strip of land that divides the parcel, which is owned by Parkway Baptist Church, which is the adjacent owner to the south, south and east. They, the planning commission did look at that, did recommend rezoning of that part of that parcel as well with this rezoning. So, it's all been recommended to be rezoned to C-two. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval unanimously.
Anything, Kevin, I mean, Tim or Mark, you want to add?
Just to emphasize what Kevin said, that, you know, when you're looking at this, you're looking at a commercial highway off the interstate. To take this from a planned residential to commercial makes much more sense and is more consistent with what we're trying to do.
I do have a question. Can I ask it now?
Go ahead, absolutely.
At our workshop, the last time we reviewed this, the, Mr. Beard was getting in contact with the church to confirm that they would also agree to the strip being rezoned. And at the time, you didn't know if they had agreed on that. Has that been done yet?
I know they have been discussing that back and forth. And we did receive a plat today, a preliminary plat to divide this property, pending this rezoning being approved, obviously, but to divide this parcel up into about five different lots, utilizing that easement as the entrance. So, I haven't talked to them directly, but my assumption is they probably wouldn't have spent the money for design and engineering if they hadn't worked that out. But they may be here and can answer that better than I can.
Okay.
I think there is somebody here from Parkway, I believe. Ken, are you here on behalf of them? That might be a question, if you don't mind.
Why don't we wait for public hearing?
Yeah, we'll wait for the public hearing for you to address that. That'd be all right?
The other question I have is, I know that the practice facility, we had asked Mike and Kevin to kind of talk a little bit. Did y'all talk to the other church?
I know Mike did talk to them. I don't know if he can speak to that. Maybe, I know he did speak with them.
Do you feel good about where we're at with that?
I do.
Okay.
I'm John Dale.
Okay. 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 Any other questions for Kevin before we move to the public hearing? Then we will go to the public hearing to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. If you'll come forward and state your name and address.
Ken Dalton, 301 Dalton Cove Drive, Smyrna. I did meet with the developer and planner, but we did not discuss the C-two part. And I just have a question here. The blue entrance is what we're talking about, point two four, with the blue entrance, blue entrance there. Their access to those pieces of property are off of that, okay? I don't know if we got a problem with that or anything, but we have not had that discussion. So, I don't know how to feel about that. But we, we're not going to be using it. It's strictly an excess road. We did, that's all I got to say about that. We have not discussed that part of it. But I did meet with them and they were, you know, filled me in on some of the rest of it.
So, worst-case scenario, we have a strip of PRD right here, right? If they don't agree to rezone that strip, is that what we're discussing?
That strip is actually zoned R-one.
So, it would be R-one with a driveway through the middle of it?
Yeah, that's, and it's already there. Of course, their property is C-two. The church's property is C-two as well, even though obviously it's not a commercial use, but it is their zoning, the part where their building is.
So, just so I understand, how would it, how it would move forward if Parkway, let's say they do agree to rezone it, it would be on Parkway's responsibility to come and ask for that to be rezoned? Or could the developer do it on their behalf?
Well, the developer requested their parcel that they had under contract. And we had recommended that the strip be considered as well, because it didn't make sense to have a driveway that's owned residential that feeds two commercial parcels as well as a commercial and another commercial parcel to the south. It's the church's property. So, it just made, from a zoning standpoint, it made sense to make it all consistent. Otherwise, technically, under our ordinance, you'd have to provide buffer strips to the driveway. And that doesn't, didn't really make any sense or anything like that. So, that's why we, we as a staff have recommended it to the planning commission, and the planning commission did recommend that as well. Obviously, there has to be an agreement. Since Parkway owns that strip, there has to be an agreement worked out regardless of the zoning for access to the parcels. So, that's, that's between the church and the developer.
Other questions?
I guess my question would be back to Mr. Dalton. When you say you haven't talked about it, is that through your church body or is that through with the developer, or both? Sometimes I know churches have to meet and make these decisions, so.
The church has met on this, and I'm kind of the spokesman for that. And I met with them along with Dan Parker, which is a pastor there. And we're having no difficulties with it. I think who's going to maintain that piece, you know, right there is about the only question we have, I guess.
Is that something you can resolve?
Oh, I'm sure. I think we can. I don't, I don't have, I think we have any issues.
I guess I'm a little confused.
Okay.
So, Mr. Dalton, I just need a clarification.
Sorry?
You're saying that you've talked with Mr. Beard on the rezoning and the use of the access road, but you have not discussed having that strip rezoned to C-two. Is that correct?
We did not have that discussion. Yep.
Okay. Other questions?
So, we can't, how do we address that then? I guess if they haven't addressed it at all, how can we vote on it?
I mean, you all can certainly act on the recommendation, the planning commission, as has been recommended. I mean, there's nothing, this isn't an annexation where you have to have consent of the owner. You all could. Again, the church's property is already zoned commercial, C-two, the same zoning. So, and they've been using this, I know it's access ingress and egress to and from the church ever since it was built. That's why it was built. So, I mean, you all certainly can rezone the property. You don't have to have a written consent like you do on an annexation.
Is that your recommendation?
I mean, I think if you're going to rezone the rest of that, the green, the area showing in green, it makes sense to rezone the blue as well. Again, you're not, any decision you all make tonight is not going to determine whether that access can be used by the developer. That's between the two property owners, so.
It's really not for us to resolve that.
Right, that's regardless of zoning.
So, we need to go back to planning and be zoned from planning?
No, it's already done.
No.
So, planning did do that part.
Correct.
Yeah, they recommend.
They've already done it. They've already made their recommendations.
Planning made the recommendation to rezone the access road.
The discussion left with they were going to talk to the church to make sure they were okay with that. And we don't have an answer for that portion.
So, we can make the motion to approve it with the recommendation, and that would rezone that strip as well?
Yes.
Okay, so, since we're still in public hearing, Mr. Dalton, do you believe the church has an issue with us doing that?
Will you come forward and?
We need you on record, Ken.
No. I don't think we have a problem with that.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Anyone else to speak for or against this item?
It's all together.
Seeing no one, we will close this public hearing and go to the council for a motion or discussion.
So, I, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the rezoning request to include the recommended rezoning from council, uh, from planning as well.
Okay, you have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Our next public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map twenty eight M, group C, parcel five point zero zero, containing approximately point four acre. It's requested by Roy Saylor, on behalf of the Rutherford County Habitat for Humanity, to go from R two to R four. The property is located at five oh three Enon Springs Road East, and it is a second reading, Kevin?
Yeah, this property is on Enon Springs, about two hundred feet west of the intersection there with College Street. Land use plan would support a medium density, single family development in this area. Surrounding zoning is all R two. Uh, the parcel does have road frontage on Frank Street as well as Enon Springs West, and there is an existing house on the parcel. Uh, it's proposed that that house would be demolished, the lot would be divided into two lots, and then two houses built in their, its place, and we actually received the plat today for that as well, pending this rezoning being approved. The planning commission did recommend approval unanimously.
Questions for, um, Kevin or Tim, Mark, do you want to add anything?
Kevin, the, the plat, when, did they do a preliminary where we had one home facing Enon and one facing Frank?
That's what they were, I honestly, I just saw that we got it, I didn't have time. I had, I was in class in Nashville, got it back about four thirty, and didn't have time to actually look at it, so.
Yeah, I know, I spoke with one of the directors for Habitat, and they indicated that they thought they were going to go that route.
That's what they were going to do.
Yeah, and, and again, this is a huge improvement for, for this lot and what exists there, and, you know, it's, it's kind of like that bonus, you're, you're improving this lot and you're doing something good with the community, is providing the affordable housing there.
Okay, um, any other questions for Kevin? Then we will go to the public to see if anyone's here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
I move we approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? I want to say I'm really excited about this project, we've been waiting quite a while for, um, something to happen on this parcel.
I'll clean that site up tremendously, yeah.
It sure will, it sure will, so. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Item F is a public hearing in the consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment of ordinance number seventeen dash twenty-three, adopting the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen fiscal year budget, specifically the fee schedule regarding application fee for parade and gathering permits of the Treasury Department, this is a second reading, Jeff?
As you stated, to the ordinance we passed, uh, last month for parades and demonstrations, just sets the fee schedule for one hundred dollars for the parade permit, two hundred dollars for demonstration permit.
Okay, questions for Jeff on this? This is a public hearing, so I'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we will close this public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
Motion we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. We'll now move on to new business. We have three items on the planning commission report tonight. The first one is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation of property located on tax map thirty-two, part of parcel nineteen point zero one, containing approximately sixteen point five three acres. It's requested by J M Burns LLC. The zoning would be R three. The property is located south of Rock Springs Road and adjacent to parcels previously annexed and zoned PRD, Woodmont, Buckingham Hills, as well as the Woodcrest Development, this is a first reading, Kevin?
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is a request for annexation with an R three zoning attached to it. Land use plan for this area would support a low density, single family residential development. Surrounding zoning is the aforementioned, as you mentioned, PRD and R three in town, and then RM in Rutherford County. Uh, the town would be providing all services to this area upon annexation. This is a, an odd recommendation in one way, uh, the, the request or, the request was originally to annex, uh, a parcel all the way to the west to adjoin, to the adjoining parcel to the west, which is in the town limits. However, it was not to, uh, annex all the remaining property that, uh, Dr. Burns owns, which would, if, if, would effectively surround this, uh, area of the county by the city limits. And so, um, that actually, uh, there've been a couple of state Supreme Court cases where you cannot do that, and so, uh, they modified the request, uh, to not include about a ten foot wide strip between what they've requested and the parcel to the west, so that would not be annexed. That would allow for, there'd be a continuity between the two sides that would be in the county. Uh, it is anticipated that all that property would be annexed at some point, um, but they have, they have not requested that at this time, there's, they're trying to figure out how they could sewer all of that area. Uh, we also discussed at the planning commission, uh, as that area, the rest of that parcel develops, that's, would really need to look at another access to Rock Springs Road. You just provide better access to that whole property, and that way you wouldn't, all the traffic wouldn't be channeled to Montgomery Way either, so, um, so that would be coming down the pike, but is, has not been requested at this time. The planning commission did recommend approval, four for, one against, with one abstention. That's all I got.
Questions for Kevin? I guess, Tim and Mark, I'd like to hear y'all's take on this.
Okay, well, I can tell you, this is one that, when I looked at, it wasn't one of those things where it was an automatic yes for me, there were, there were portions of it that I struggled with. What you're seeing, when you're looking at the blue area there, is about fifty homes there, and if you, if you continued, what direction is that, Kevin?
North, east and north.
Thank, yeah, I was going to guess east, but if you continued where you would see that area between Signature and, uh, the eighteen acres, we looked at a, a sketch where that will eventually fill in as well. And the key question that I asked was, if we allowed the eighteen acres to be developed, which is about fifty homes, are the roadways there sufficient enough to handle the additional traffic of the fifty? And Kevin's response was, Montgomery Way is a collector, and he felt like with this development, that it could handle those fifty additional homes. So I took that into account with knowing that we have the same builder and we'll have the same consistency as far as design in homes and lot sizes and whatnot, uh, and I took that into account with, with a clear direction that any additional, uh, development there would, would have to require some type of additional access onto Rock Springs for it to go forward from there.
Yeah, that was one of the questions, it's really kind of hard to tell on the drawing, but where it says Signature Court, all of those, it looks like lots along that entire edge, so where exactly would this, even if that property in between develops, where's it going to tie in to Montgomery Way?
Yeah, and it, there's some, there's a couple, I think, roads that aren't built yet, uh, one, you can see on the map there, there's a road called Abbott's Wood Drive. That would actually, there is a road that would come off of Abbott's Wood Drive from the south that could, would, into that parcel, and then there is, it's an odd name, Q Garden Lane, I think's the name of it, in the, it's called Buckingham Hills, it's a separate development, also by, uh, Dr. Burns, it would connect into this as well, so, that's, that would be the direct connection into this eighteen acres, and there would be a future connection from Abbott's Wood Dr- uh, Drive, a different road, but from that road into there as well. Uh, and then, as you go down, or go down the hill, uh, north toward Rock Springs Road, you could have other, uh, access to Montgomery Way, uh, as well as Rock Springs Road in the future.
That was the whole idea behind looking at it now and wanting more ingress and egress somewhere else.
Yeah, right.
It's, uh, in the next phase, and we even talked about the bridge over, the bridge over the creek.
To get to Rock Springs Road is going to be, involve a bridge.
And, you know, I know a developer probably doesn't want to spend that kind of money, but that's something that I think we talked about in planning, that is going to be needed there to offset these concerns about.
I mean, if you know about it now, you can start to think about that cost and spread it out over a lot of lots versus a few lots, and that's where.
Part of the reason, I think, and Kevin can touch on this, and I, I think Matt was here from SEC, he's back there now, part of the reason they came with this parcel first was the sewer grade, is that correct, Matt? So, uh, from a dynamic of making it work first, starting here instead of over there.
Do you think the developer understood the need for a bridge and what we're needing long-term? Kevin, what concerns do you have?
I don't have a lot of concerns with this specifically, other than I, I wish we didn't, I wish we could, didn't have to leave that ten foot wide strip, because that just gets to be, we'll have to clean that up at some point, uh, which can be done in a future annexation request. I really wish we could just think about action, all of it, but this is what was requested, so that's all we can do right now. And then, long-term, we've got to have that other access to Rock Springs Road, I think.
Talking to the developer, what do you think the timeline is on that, that we're going to be before that happens?
My understanding that they're, my understanding is they're getting fairly close, they thought on working the sewer issue out, so I think it's going to be fairly soon. Uh, I don't know the exact time, the development timeline, they're, uh, that last section of Woodcrest, I know they're getting ready to record that, and then, uh, the Buckingham Hills, I know is under construction as well, so my gut, this first section will be fairly soon, uh, but the future sections, I really don't know exactly what the timeline would be.
And let's just say, something bad happened and this went forward like this, but nothing else went forward, are we then putting ourselves in a bind?
I don't think you're in a bind just with this section, I think, I think as you go forward, you're going, any future sections, yes, and I think if this developer decides he's done, he's, moves on, he sells the property to somebody else, the next developer, we're going to ask them to do the same thing, so.
Okay.
Just to clarify, what's being shown on the screen, on the television still shows the eighteen acres, so, um, we're actually just voting on sixteen and a half, right?
Right, right.
Sixteen point five to eighteen. Kept seeing on the picture eighteen.
Essentially the same area, just minus the ten foot strip, however long that line is.
Yeah, along that R three section right there.
Correct.
Okay, other questions for Kevin? Do I have a motion?
I'll move we approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? I think we are all pretty clear that moving forward, we want to make sure that there's other access to the property, and I think you know that would let any developers, whether it's this one or any other ones, know that, so. Okay, uh, have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Our next item is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation of property located on tax map thirty-five, part of parcel eighty-one point zero four, containing approximately one point seven five acres. It's requested by the Patel's, and the zoning would be C two. The property is located at eight two one six Florence Road, and it is a first reading.
Yeah, this is, uh, is on eighty-two sixteen Florence Road, it is currently developed with a commercial building. Um, the, the land use plan would support a medium density, single family residential development in this area. Everything else out there is residential, and we didn't have a commercial note here, but this building has been there for many years, uh, and is currently zoned commercial services, CS, in the county. The surrounding zoning is R three in town and RM in Rutherford County. The, the area does lie within CUD service boundary, so they would be providing water, we would be providing all of the services. Again, the portion that they have requested to be annexed, which is not the entire parcel, it's just the commercial portion of the parcel, which is the one point seven five acres. Uh, the planning commission did review this and did recommend approval unanimously.
Is that the bait shop?
It is, yes.
Okay.
Questions for Kevin?
Kevin, by doing so, I think the primary crux of it was it would allow gasoline sales here.
Correct.
Which I think have been done potentially a long time ago.
But not, it's not currently.
Yeah.
And they do want to, to, redevelop the site, they want to utilize sewer to redevelop that site.
It seems like it's more in line with how this, how the site's being used and has been used.
Correct.
Um, that, that piece of property's in commercial as long as I can remember, so, it just hasn't been zoned that way.
Right, well, I don't know what it was zoned in, I know what, they did, they did get rezoned through the county last summer.
Okay.
To the commercial services, I don't know what it had been zoned in years past, but...
Tim or Mark, anything else?
That's probably.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I move we approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Our last item under the planning commission report is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map forty-nine, parcel thirty point zero two, containing approximately three point three five acres. It's requested by Rocky Top Properties LLC to go from R three to I three. The property is located at two fifteen Mill Lane, and this is a first reading, Kevin?
And this, uh, piece of property has, um, been looked at before by planning commission, I don't know if the council ever actually voted on it. Uh, a few months ago, they did request rezoning to R six. It is on Mill Lane, about eight hundred and fifty feet south of Wade Harrod Road. Uh, land use plan would support heavy industrial development in this area. Surrounding zoning is R three and I three in town and RM in Rutherford County. Uh, sewer is not here currently, it would have to become south from Wade Harrod Road on easements from the adjoining property owners or within the ride away of Mill Lane, that was really kind of more for the information to the, the developer, so he was aware of that. Uh, Mill Lane is a county road still, it is not within the town limits. Uh, again, this was one that the planning commission did look at a few months ago with an R six request, they did recommend denial of that request, which subsequently, uh, was withdrawn by the developer, and then they came back to I one to request I three, which is what it was zoned for, well, for probably thirty years, and then a, a couple years ago, an owner did request to be rezoned to R three, um, and so he wants to go back to the I three zoning, uh, that he had previously. So, planning commission did review this and did recommend approval unanimously.
Questions for Kevin on this? Tim or Mark, anything to add?
Just returning back to what it was, it was a better fit, and it's a better fit this way. Really not much else around it that justifies it being R six, so, that's why we made that decision before, so, I'll give you a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Item B is the packaged liquor board report, there are no applications for the town council to consider at this time, so we'll move on to item C, which is consideration of the adoption of an anti-bullying policy to be included in the employee handbook. Jeff, are you taking this?
I'll take this, uh, Jeff, I don't know if he'll be here tonight. As a result of the Healthy Workplace Act by Governor Haslam, um, and work with TASSER created, where if the municipality passes a, uh, anti-bullying policy that models what the state has, which this does, um, it provides some, uh, more protections and immunities for the, for the town government as well, places it on the, uh, offender in case there is a cause of action that occurs. Obviously, I was not here at workshop, but Jeff did communicate that, uh, there was questions about expanding it also to, uh, not being able to do cyberbullying that way with other town employees, so that's been added, as you can see there on, on, on the first page. Uh, but, uh, it's basically, uh, uh, there's no negatives about passing this policy for the town, it provides protection and also it, uh, enhances the, uh, ability of employees to avoid being in a harassment situation.
I think we were sent the cyberbullying portion to our email prior to, after we requested that be added. Are there any questions of Jeff or any comments? Then do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. We now have an appointment of one member to the Arts Commission to serve an unexpired term ending in two thousand and nineteen. Emily Williams had to resign, and there are six citizen members on this committee. The newly appointed member will serve the time remaining in Ms. Williams' term, which ends in March of two thousand and nineteen. We had four individuals that put in, Carrie Finch, Lauren Fitzgerald, Robin Calata, and Debbie Michelson, but I think Debbie's already on there, is she not? So, only three, um, and what I need from the council, is there, um, any nominations that you'd like to put up?
To nominate Lauren Fitzgerald.
Lauren Fitzgerald?
Lauren Fitzgerald.
Okay. Any other nominations? Then, we will cease nominations, and since we only had one person nominated, then all in favor of Lauren, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, Lauren is our new member that will serve a term ending in March of 2019. Item E is consideration of a resolution requesting the assistance of the Town of Smyrna State Legislature delegation in obtaining funds from the state of Tennessee to widen Ammival Road. Mr. Gill, do you want to?
The only thing I would say pursuant to the council's request, and conversations I've had with many, many, many folks, we all recognize the need to have something done on Ammival Road, and we've drafted a resolution to send to all our legislators and forward on to TDOT to encourage the widening of Ammival Road. And Diane has that resolution.
We have a meeting with TDOTs?
March 23rd, I believe.
I was trying to remember what month. To talk about specifically at the interchange at Ammival Road, but this is more addressing, actually, Ammival Road going all the way out to 840. So, I think we've been talking about this for a while, and we just want to make sure that our legislators know, and that are, they're also carrying the flag for us, letting them know how important it is that they look at Ammival Road. So, anything else anybody'd like to add?
Only thing I'll add is, I think, I think that this, this is a great segue into preparing for the future. We, in this ordinance, we're already, or resolution, we're already talking about almost 3,000 homes that have been added, an additional 3,700 coming, and conversations that we recently had about being prepared for growth in the future and not being behind the eight ball. This is a perfect example of us trying to start that process now, because we all know that with TDOT, it'll take three to five years.
Agreed.
Kevin, is this on the MPO list yet?
I don't believe Ammival Road is on the MPO's or TDOT's, any type of radar, if anytime soon, that I'm aware of. They did add a couple of bridges during the, some of the, the, well, the stimulus projects and all. They did widen a couple of the bridges out in the county. I think that was about it.
You know, I think what's significant about this is this is a resolution from the Town of Smyrna, saying that we as a town need assistance here. And it's something we're looking to, to, as far as, we're recognizing the gross, growth, and we want to make sure that our representatives also recognize it in doing this in a formal way. It's really easy when you're traveling in, in the town limits to be on a road and automatically assume that it's something that the town owns, when in fact, when you're looking at Jefferson Pike, or you're looking at Ammival Road, or Sam Ridley Parkway, these are state highways. And these are state highways that we need help with local, and actually regional, traffic issues as we continue to grow. And we need these guys on board with us.
Agreed.
And consistently pushing.
Yes. You know, one of the things we, we've talked about before too, is our local roads. We're able to get on those pretty quick. You know, we've got the Enid Springs Road expansion coming, and Nolan Drive that we're looking at doing, and so, we're able to do our local streets and roads pretty quickly. But to Tim's comment, we just have to wait a long, long time for TDOT and some of those people to get involved and help us out. I think they see the need, they know we have a need. We've talked about interchanges, we've talked about the Ammival Road interchange. For anybody that lives out there, bless your hearts, because you, you sit in a lot of traffic, even sitting on the interstate at times, trying to get off of there. So, keep in mind, that's really not our, we can't do a whole lot there unless we have a state and federal highway involved. So, I think it's important that we let the public know that. We're doing all we can. This resolution, that's what that does, so...
Kevin, doesn't the Enid Springs Rocky Fork veer over into Ammival Road as it goes further out?
On our thoroughfare plan, we do have it, yes. Once it gets west of I-24, we have it kind of paralleling Ammival, and eventually coming into Ammival near 840.
Very good.
Other questions? Then, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I didn't see anything on our desk for other tonight, so we will move on to announcements and status reports. Ms. Diane?
I have nothing.
Mr. Gill?
The only thing I'd say regarding status, I mean, it's pretty evident that, if you don't know, we had a sewer line leak last week. You hadn't watched TV, or had it ear to the ground. We're so proud of the response we had. Ms. Strange, you and the utility department corralled it. Sew is just, almost immediately, Matt Church is here. Appreciate the job you did. It's pretty remarkable. I think TDEC was really impressed, so essentially, I want to give a shout-out to all our employees for what they did, cleanup, response. And anyway, we're, we're back at full operation, and the leak didn't impact the residents in any way. And anyway, nice job.
I also want to echo that. I mean, our employees work 24 hours, and refresh my memory, who was it that we had come out that really stepped up to, to help us?
Of course, Premier, Mr. Church and his team, and also Aaron Duggan, a local contractor that came out and sped things up tremendously on the repair, so we really appreciate him coming out his way.
Thank you all for all you did.
Yeah, I think, I think, I just want to, one thing, commend you guys for the speed of the recovery. You see similar things like this happen in other parts of the state, in other parts of the country, and you hear about it for weeks. Within 48 hours, we were well on our way to a clean situation that was already under control within 12 hours. So, I'm very, very proud of the work you guys did, and it, it reflects well on your leadership and your team to be able to respond and, and handle it as quickly as you did. It's not something, although it's something you train for, it's not something you do every day. So, it's pretty impressive how well you came together as a team and resolved it.
And I think when you use the word team, we had quite a few departments. It just wasn't the utilities department that stepped up. It was quite a few different departments, so thank you to all involved.
Well, and what I'd say to that really, really quick is, you know, a lot of great comments that came from how we responded, and kudos to Mike and his team out there, everybody that was involved. And every now and then, you'll hear a negative comment from somebody that, you know, you're wondering, how can they say something negative about something that broke underground? You know? And so, to those people, I would just say, accidents happen, but we have the kind of people that get out there and take care of it pretty doggone fast, in a very thorough manner. The people that stepped up at the last minute, Aaron and some of those people, Mr. Church, I mean, that's, that's a, that's a team effort. They come from different places and came into Smyrna to help out, and did it very responsively, and very affordably, I might add. So, we appreciate them.
Thank you. Mr. Gill, anything else?
Yep. One other thing. First, I want to congratulate Alan Harrell. That's a tremendous achievement that you've earned. And I'll take a page out of your playbook. I'll keep a long story short. I've been in Smyrna for, golly, if I tell you, you'll know how old I am, but right at 60 years. And when I left MPSU at 22, I became the head basketball coach at Smyrna High for 16 years, then assistant principal, and spent the last nine years as the director of Rutherford County Schools, which was an enormous responsibility. Forty years total. And took about 14, 15 months off, and this job came open, and I took this job, golly, four years and three months ago, and have thoroughly enjoyed it. I cannot tell you how proud I am of the council, that, you know, they do everything in the interest of our residents. They have made this job, by and large, fun. At the same time, we've really, from my perspective, advanced the town in a positive direction. Also, I've had the distinct pleasure of working with some outstanding directors, each of whom, you know, the only criticism I have of them, they're all Tennessee fans instead of Ohio State Buckeye fans. But we've gotten past that. But I'm so proud of them. And with that said, it's probably time, my intention is to retire on August the 31st, which gives us about six months to select a replacement. And we're going to work hard for those six months and continue to try to advance the city forward. I get bored, I go out there and help the Lebois milk cows, lay in the back if they'll take me on. But at any rate, in all seriousness, I appreciate the opportunity.
You came to me, I guess, last week, and said you were going to be doing this, and I was very hesitant, because I was disappointed that he was leaving, because we've gotten so much done in four years. But I also know, he's worked really, really hard at a lot of different jobs, and that have benefited so many individuals here in Smyrna, Rutherford County, and all of middle Tennessee. And there's no way we can say thank you enough for all that you've done. But I understand, you're at the age, you want to go golf when you want to go golf, and you want to do nothing when you want to do nothing. And we'll have lots of things on a list for you to do if you want to come back and do some things and volunteer. But there's no way to thank you enough for what you've done, to help build on a foundation that, from people that were long before us, and that you've made Smyrna a better community. And you've always been a Smyrna boy, you'll always be a Smyrna boy, and I think that's where your heart is. And I just can't tell you how much I appreciate all that you've done, and working with you has been a real pleasure.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Harry, you left something off your resume call right there. I think you and I have talked about this a number of times. When I moved here, I was 13 when I came to Smyrna. My parents relocated here, and I took up a job as a newspaper carrier. So, my, my newspaper route consisted of the area over there behind the old Goodall Clinic. And then, we actually moved out to Smyrna Air Base for about a year while my parents had a home built, because the base had just closed. So, there's a lot of rental housing out there. And I took that route on. I gave up my route, because it's a little hard to bicycle from the base over to Goodall. So, I took a new route on. And in doing so, Smyrna was growing really quick. We had a lot of people moving into the base. And I'm telling a story on you, because I'm fond of you, and I just want, I want the public to know your background and where we come from. But Mr. Gill was my newspaper supervisor for a period of time, and, and I get to tell him that because the base started up so many new newspaper subscriptions, that I won him and me both a trip to Florida. So, he owes me big. And, and, so, when, when you retire, I would, I would like for you to take me on your next cruise with you and LeAnn, if that's okay.
I will.
Okay?
I sort of remember that I won us a trip.
Yeah. I've got other stories that I just won't go with, okay? We'll leave it right there. That said, I do want to just tell you how much I...
Thanks for taking me with you.
I think of you, I respect you. We've both been in Smyrna a long, long time, and to have the ability and the opportunity to work with you again in this capacity has been nothing but great. I knew your heart was with our town. I knew that when we brought you on, that's what we were getting, and you were a diligent, hard worker. You love Smyrna. And so, we've seen the results of that today. There's a lot of good stuff, guys, that's taken place out there, a lot because of Mr. Gill's leadership. I know the people that work with him, and his directors, and the employees of the town have a lot of respect for him as well. So, thank you for everything you've done. I just want to tell you that from the bottom of my heart. I appreciate you, and I totally respect what you've done for us and our town.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Yeah, I'd like to add that we go back to world history class in sophomore year. I won't go into your, the finer points of your lecture on the Greek and the Carthaginians, but I still... Does he know what a Carthaginian is? I still remember.
Well, I used to. He did back then.
But you know, that's pretty good, wasn't it? I saw you take a girls' basketball team that didn't have much of a reputation, all turn them into winners. And, you know, just following you through your career, you know, if you could associate one word, it's winner. And I know that when you came here, you took a town that, you know, we're coming off an economic downturn. You looked at some things, restructured some things. I think you built one of the best staffs I've ever been around. And it's, it's amazing, the things that we've been able to accomplish, and the things that we, we've been able to do. It's made my job as a council person much easier. You know, I, I can go to sleep at night and know that things we're going to take care of, and things are going to work. There's just so many different proven areas, from our improved financial position, to employee morale, to, you know, things like Florence Road getting done, the Lowry Street project getting done, Depot, which, you know, has your signature all over it. A humbly thank you, and I appreciate everything that you've done. I hope you have a great retirement. I hope we end up on one of those cruise ships. I don't know if I want to take Mark. Oh, I'm going. But thank you very much. I much appreciate it.
Appreciate you.
You know, I was in that world history class too, but I don't remember Greeks or Carthaginians. I remember full-court presses and boxing in the guard and things like that.
You were asleep during that portion.
No.
Yeah, I saw you.
No, I was a good student.
Okay.
Wasn't I, Harry?
I think, I think you were very much awake.
But you know, I, I really do appreciate the time and effort that you've put into this job. And, and to be honest, when we hired you, I expected no less, and, and I think that what you've done is exactly what we expected. We needed to get some wheels turning, and get some things going, and that's exactly what you've done, and it's, it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
I don't have any other flowery words like these other elephant individuals. They must have paid attention in speech class where I didn't. You know, maybe I was asleep during that one.
We all remember world history the same way, though. The class of '75 here, we, we had you. We remember that pretty well, don't we?
I'll tell you, there's only a couple of men in this town that so many people could say they were either, you coached them, you taught them, you were their principal, you were, you were impactful in all of their lives. And all of us here on the council all had you in school.
Everyone, yeah.
And we were all there at some point in some fashion. My memories of Mr. Gill involved a paddle, so I don't want to talk about that. Maybe one of the few he ever did, I don't know. Or maybe he did a lot.
I only want to say, I only want.
But, you know, Mr. Gill was there in high school. Later, when my seven or eight-year-old was having some trouble at one of the local schools, Mr. Gill was the superintendent. And I got to sit in his superintendent office and have some conversations about how to handle the problems that we were having at that time. And then, to get elected into this position and have a different relationship with Mr. Gill now as a town manager, and as, as a leader of the town. It's been interesting to have three different distinct relationships with you, and each one of them, I've learned more about you, and more about what you can be. And you've been successful at all of those, which says a lot about how you can handle different situations that come at you. I think that's the part that people don't really see, is the, the ever-changing flow of things that come at somebody in this position and all of those positions. You've been able to handle it very well. And with that respect, you know, is, all of these folks have said how much they respected you. I mean, it kind of goes without saying. I feel like I'm piling on, but I, I can tell you, the six of us or eight of us that are involved aren't the only people that have that same respect for you.
Thank you.
So, thank you for what you've done, and I assume you're going to stay around Smyrna?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Except when he's on the cruises.
Except when he's taking Mark to cruises.
Okay, I guess I'll be the one to close it out. And I actually did play for you.
She did. She played basketball for me.
I did, all through high school. And I can say, he's actually a much more mellow fellow now.
Which, which explains the paddle comment I made. It was all him.
Rock Hill, when she was running her campaign, wanted to know if you had a paddle in your office.
But I, I've seen you in a couple of different roles as well, and, and I agree, you, you are, you're a winner in everything you do. You are very persistent, you get things done, and you know how to create a good team. You are very persistent, you get things done, and you know how to create a good team. And being on the council here for the last 14 months, it's imperative that you are in everything that we've been able to accomplish, and you allow your directors and the staff to do their jobs. And I don't know that I could say anything other than what they have already said about you. It's been a pleasure and an honor to work with you in this capacity.
Thank you, Gill.
So we have a couple of more months, end of August is when your last day is going to be, and so we still have quite a bit that we want to get accomplished.
I've got a list.
I will tell you that, council, we will send to you the job description for you to look over and get back to Jeff Craig, and we will post the job on February the 26th, and we will start that process to hire a new town manager, obviously not someone to fill your shoes, but someone to build on the foundation that you've added to from previous individuals that have made our community great. So thank you for what you've done. Anything anybody else wants to add to that? I think we might have caught some people by surprise tonight, and I think they all would say some of the same things that we've all said, so. And we'll give the citizens and the employees that opportunity as we get closer to your retirement date. So I'll start at this end tonight. Steve? Oh, wait, sorry, Jeff, anything?
Nothing.
Nothing? Steve?
No, I have nothing. We've got a couple other meetings before the next events that I need to hit are coming up, so I'll get them then.
Okay. Mark?
Once again, just to reiterate how proud and pleased I am with our utilities department, Mike, you guys, awesome job, I want to say that again. Good to see Chief Bill back there again. He's recovering, he's had some back surgery, and we're glad to see him back. And is that your normal chair? That's not, is it? But maybe we need to find his normal chair and get him back in it. Last thing, I want to wish a happy, happy, happy Valentine's Day tomorrow to my lovely wife of 36 years, Connie.
Great.
Thanks, Mark.
Raquel?
You're in trouble.
I would just like to say thank you to all of the departments who were a part of the cleanup. You all did a fantastic job, and I reiterate everything that they have said about that experience, and thank you for all that you did. And that's all I have.
Right. HG?
Yeah. Facebook is one of those things that cuts both ways, you know, it can be really good and it can have problems sometimes, but I was looking on it the other day, and it was, I was on one of those sites, and sometimes this particular site has some negative things which come up, and then people pile on top of it and that sort of thing. But somebody threw out there that, oh, boy, what about these potholes? I bet it takes them forever to fill them. And it's like, oh, boy, here we go, you know, here we go. And then two posts later, it said, it's 8:30 and those potholes are already filled. And it was just really interesting to see how quickly the town has responded to some of the potholes around town. So, you know, good job on that, guys, along with, you know, the leaks and such as that that we've had. It also is good to see Chief back. One other thing I did see on the Facebook page was that there was a group out at the Florence Road area that was trying to garnering their forces and picking up trash. And I thought that was really great that that community is coming together. We've talked to a few of them out there about how they have taken ownership of the park out there, and that's, you know, what we really like is to have the neighborhood pulling together. All of the groups across town should take a look at the trash that's around. I was driving through today, and, you know, it's just an ongoing thing. Now, and why, I don't understand. I couldn't tell you the last time I threw a bottle or a piece of trash out of my car, and I just don't understand it. But if we try to have a little higher level of awareness about it, maybe it'll get a little better. And happy Valentine's Day to all. Thank you.
Tim?
Well, to answer your question, yes, I have taken care of my wife's present. I know you always chide us guys every year about Valentine's Day, so I know Donna's not watching right now, there's something else I'm sure on TV that you'd rather watch, but that I wouldn't. But happy Valentine's Day, Donna. Maybe you can say this during replay, and Mary asked me, yes, I have taken care of my wife this year. Steve? Okay?
You might want to let Steve have another turn.
Yeah.
Do you need to say anything?
Only thing I want to say is y'all have a lot more years in this than I do. And honestly, it goes without saying, I treat Pam so well every day that I don't, I'm just kidding. We actually already have, we already have Valentine's reservations for tomorrow.
Diane, would you get Pam her phone, please?
She is probably watching, just so you know.
You're digging deeper. So...
The phone's going off right now.
Steve, you haven't, you haven't been on the council, but I always try to remind the males on the council that when Valentine's Day is coming up, just so they don't forget and get in any trouble, so...
I do appreciate it.
My wife did respond already, Mark, you're a good man, was her comment.
To me or you?
Okay, I want to just have a few updates. Boards and committees, we appoint our boards the March council meeting, so applications are due March the 2nd, and we encourage you to get involved in the Town of Smyrna. If you are a resident of the Town of Smyrna, we have boards and committees that will have openings. We do have an opening for someone from the county on our Parks and Rec Board, so if you live in the county and want to get involved on the Parks and Rec Board, then we would gladly take your application. You can do that through our town website. The Sister City Chili Supper will be Saturday, February the 24th, from 5:00 to 7:00. The tickets can be purchased individually here at Town Hall, $10 for adults and $5 for children. And there are different sponsor levels if a business or an individual would like to sponsor. You can call Tiffany Lawson here at Town Hall for more information.
Can I add just real quick?
Absolutely.
I'm on that committee, and just to clarify, this chili supper is to support students, 20 students that are actually visiting Zama Japan this summer. Each of them have to contribute a certain portion, the town contributes a certain portion, and then they have to raise that other portion. So this helps them meet their goals so that they don't have to pay for it out of their pocket in addition to what they've already committed. So all the support we can get would be great.
Also, in regards to the Sister City program, they're still recruiting students for the program. The applications can be found at the Town of Smyrna website. Perspective students must live within the Town of Smyrna or attend a Smyrna middle or high school, and they will be traveling to Zama Japan for two weeks in July. Chief Bill, our Smyrna Fire and Police Department's annual Easter egg hunt will be Sunday, March 24th. Can you believe it's already here again? Gosh.
Saturday.
Sorry, Sat...
I believe it.
What? No, it's, it should be Sunday, the 20, no, or should it be Saturday? Is it Saturday? Okay, Saturday, the 24th, it's wrong on my paper. At 1:00 PM at Lee Victory Recreation Park, and don't forget to bring your own baskets. The Easter Bunny will be on hand for pictures, and the rain out date will be March the 31st, and it's sponsored by the Smyrna Natural Gas Department. Smyrna baseball, Smyrna softball, and Smyrna fast pitch registration is going on now, and you can, and adult softball, soccer, and flag football, which was not on my list. So you can get on the town website to find out how to register for those. Also, the Jeff Coos Memorial, the deadline for purchasing pavers so that your paver is at the site on the day of the ribbon cutting will be Friday, February 16th. So this Friday, if you want to make sure your paver is there at the ribbon cutting, $100 for a four by eight, which gets you three lines, $500 is the eight by eight, which gets you six lines, and $1,000 for the 12 by 12, which gets you nine lines. We also can do logos on the larger pavers, and all you have to do is call and ask for Amber or Tiffany here at Town Hall. Just to kind of give you an update, this, in the last two weeks, we deposited $38,935 that was raised between donations and pavers being purchased. We're down now to write at about $150,000 is what we have left to meet our goal, so thank you to all of you who have been involved. This kind of shows you a little bit of what's going on. If you've driven by recently, you see a lot of work that's taking place out towards Sam Ridley Parkway, and it's really starting to take shape now. They've gotten the forms off of the planners and the benches, and it's really looking good. Ribbon cutting will be second Saturday in June, which is June the 9th. Okay, that talks about that. And the last thing I have is the Smyrna Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association is going to be doing their annual trivia night. It'll take place on Friday, March the 16th. Sign up and dinner, it starts at 7:00, table of eight, 250 for advanced registration, and 280 at the door. I've always heard it is a really fun night, so we encourage you to participate in the Smyrna Citizens Police Academy Trivia Night. Anything else?
We need to invite the citizens down to see our new digs here.
Well, it's not finished yet.
It will be by the time we get in here again.
It will be. If you've not been in in a while, we're kind of updating, we'll be getting some new carpet and some things will be looking different the next time you come in, so we're really excited about all of the changes, so.
Are you also still selling tickets for the banquet for the Coon Victory?
Oh, yes, Lifetime Achievement Award, that is, you're going to have to, I didn't write it down, Mike, help me out.
Next Friday.
Friday, the 23rd. And if you would like to be a part of the Volunteer of the Year banquet, we encourage you to come out. You can buy tickets at the door, or you can buy them beforehand at the Parks Department. Anything else? Nothing else, then we are adjourned.